She gave.
Defeated with nine oh four.
Okay. Discussion on the resolution, let's keep going. Uh, Mr. Pro John and then Larry.
Okay, I think you just witnessed why it's a gamble to amend this document. You just had to meander through the language to try to decipher exactly what's gonna happen with the amendment. The amendment was presented with good intent, I believe. But it had significant changes throughout the document. And every time you amend this, that if we're gonna do our job properly tonight, every time you make an amendment, we're gonna have to go through this thing and figure out what effect it has on the rest of the document. And I think that if we're gonna do it proper, every time you amend it, we need to figure it out. That's what you have before you. So, as I said last week, I already intend to vote no on all amendments. Thank you.
Larry.
I'm not offering any amendments, I just want to speak on the resolution itself. Is that open for that?
Sure.
Okay.
Discussion.
Just want to, you know, I've been about this for 25 years, as people know, and I've never done anything here for personal gratification, I just believe my heart is where I can do. And as far as people to worry about change, let me just say something. I'm gonna mention three names, I think most people here know who they are, but they won't, I'll tell you everything. It's Renee Favelaro, Michael DeBakey, Jonas Stark. We all know who Jonas Stark is. He along with Mr. Sabin created the polio vaccine. Renee Favelaro was the inventor of the bypass surgery. Michael DeBakey developed it and perfected it. I ask myself, if those gentlemen had said to themselves, gee, everything is status quo, everything is fine, I guess you know, it'll all work out, let's not work in a ceremony or forget about it. And I ask myself that over and over again. And I can go on and on, we have comput- I don't like computers, anybody here knows. I do not like computers. I don't like cell phones, I don't like iPads, Facebook, and nonsense. To me, it's a total nonsense. But I do set, but I do set in front of that computer, do emails and go on, and all that sort of stuff. So there's changes that I have accepted. I don't necessarily like it, but I've accepted. It's just the way life is, sometimes there's changes that are good. And I, but I said if, if we, if I said or say to myself, you know, if there's no change whatsoever, do we continue on the way we are? I don't know. But I ask, but I ask the question, if these gentlemen here that I mentioned have said, ah, there's no sense in going on any further, this is just a waste of time, it's not gonna change anything, so we're not, we're gonna stop working on it, forget about it. Just think the consequences of that. I, I'm sure there's many people in here that have had bypass surgery and have just been to that. So I, I'd like to see this go to the voters. If the voters vote this down ten to one, fine, I've had my day in the sun. If they prove it five to one, I don't, whatever. But I think the voters should have that opportunity to do that. I'm a person who believes in voters having the say. I mean, we pay the bills, and that's the way it should be. So I'm not gonna speak guns with anymore, everybody knows how I feel about it, and that's all I'm gonna say, and obviously you're gonna get a yes vote from me to some of the voters.
What's that, Larry? Jeff?
Uh, I'd like to put up a resolution that keeps in wishes tonight will be original tax commission, which is to hold the treasure position from the rest of the resolution, rest of the charter, and put it to the voters. Get voted, if they wanted a county treasurer, or they want an elected county treasurer, or they want a appointed administrator, appointed finance officer.
The issue we have, well, the issue we have is to put it up to the vote. The issue we have to put it up to the vote is that we'll have to go through the process again. And that's the issue that came up right now, is that we, the issue we were discussing. We don't have the time to change it out and make it a separate vote.
I respectfully think that that legal interpretation is wrong.
This is why the timeframe was set up for tonight, and it's that a change of-
I understand. I think that legal interpretation is wrong, that you have to go through the process. You can very, very easily settle that, and here's how you do it. You take the, a language that's originally under four oh one, and then you take Larry's amendment, and you put into that section as per the ballot option two, and you put them as addendum to the charter, so people when they go to the library or read it online, understand that they will also have the option to vote on that. You can do it that way. It, it does not fly in the face of public law, home rule, I think that's a proper interpretation, and you can do it that way. And that's how we propose to do it, and I'd like to second.
I'll second it if we can have it. If not, I'd like to-
You second it for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
You're looking for amendment, right?
The question would have to be yes or no. Do you want to, do you want to stay with the county, elected county treasurer? Or would you like to switch to an appointed financial officer? You could amend the charter part where it says financial officer, to say, see option two. You put that at the attachment of the back of the charter, and therefore when the public votes on it, on referendum, either they vote for the elected or the appointed, and then that becomes part of the charter document. All you have to do is show the public what they're voting on. You don't need a local law for that. You already have a local law.
You could, you could, uh... Yeah, that is, that is possible to accomplish. You would need the language of exactly what the alternative would be, and maybe it would be the same language that Supervisor Cottington just proposed in the last amendment. Maybe it wouldn't be, I, I don't know, that's up to you folks. I'm looking at it though as a, not an amendment to this document, but as a separate resolution.
At another time?
Well, at another time or at this, whether it's at, at, at another time or at this time, you're not directly proposing an amendment to the charter, proposed charter.
Right. You're only offering the option for the public to vote on that part of your charter. That's what we're already doing. The language is in the charter, and the amendment, the language that Supervisor Cottington had you, gave you, strikes that other language, it gives you the alternative to keep it as an elected official. So, if you put into that option what that four, four oh one is gonna be in subsequent sections, you would put in that charter, see attached amendments, as per referendum, you know, option two of the referendum, we're only adding an option. We already have to go into referendum. So they're, they're considering it as an option to that. That meets the legal test, in my opinion, and we can do it. You just gotta be able to show, so it's not confusing. It would be an addendum on the back of the charter. As long as I'm able to view it on the website or in the library and understand it, why does that, that won't violate any laws, amendments, so we wouldn't have to have another vote thing to do?
What you need to do, and I think we're all thinking out loud here, is, first of all, you'd need another further resolve in the body of the resolution itself with respect to providing that the board supervisors is, is authorizing and directing that it can't be split that way. And then, I, I'm just mulling over, this is the first I've, I've heard of this, this proposal, the ramifications of it going to the voters from the standpoint of the adoption of the charter. You want to put a sub-choice, sub-question basically.
And if they shoot down option one, which is the charter, then option two becomes irrelevant, and vice versa. They, they elect to have an appointed treasurer and shoot down the charter, it doesn't matter. They'd have to elect to have a charter.
Do you want to leave the charter as it is, as one vote, with the, with the finance commissioner?
Right, and the finance commissioner would be option two, to determine, the public would then determine whether they want-
Treasurer would be option two.
The treasurer, finance officer would be option two. Do you want an elected treasurer, or do you want an appointed financial officer? You put that addendum in there, you put both the language at the bottom, and whichever one they choice, whichever choice they make on option two, provided they pass the charter, would then become the charter. Laws is clearly stated to the public, so they know what they're voting on. Why would we need a separate local law? That's ridiculous.
I'm gonna, Larry's looked into that pretty deep, and before we go any further, I want to ask Larry, first of all, I want to, did you understand what he's asking?
Oh yes, I understand fully.
On all your research, can you give me an opinion on it?
In my opinion, you can't abolish an elected office without a local law, public hearing can't be done according to law. And if it's not embodied within that charter, which is almost impossible to do, if it's not embodied within that charter, that's the way I understand the law, because I designed it, and I've been doing a lot of law reading. But like I said, I'm a attorney, obviously, and I don't know where it is. But, as I understand, the only way you can abolish elected positions are local laws, public hearing process, which will totally take the out of your timeline for this year's election. So, I think the point, to me, the point is rather, I, I would like to see it that way, Jeff, I'm gonna be wrong. I just, I don't know whether you agree with that or not, that's the way I, that's the way I agree with it.
And what I, certainly you're right in, in your interpretation of the law, that you can't abolish the elected position without going through this process. I, I'm trying to, as far as the idea of, of abolishing the position by leaving the existing proposed language in the proposed charter in Article Four with the finance commissioner, and if it was adopted, you would, you would have met all of the criteria to do that. I think what Supervisor Stark is suggesting is an additional option subsequent to that to effectively bring back and override the, the adoption of the charter by local law to change the position almost immediately back to appointed. I, I'm not comfortable sitting here simply saying off the cuff that that can be done.
But, I'm just, one order. I agree with Supervisor Cottington. If we are merely trying to abolish an elected position tonight, we would have to have a public hearing and a local law and all that. We have already had that public hearing. In essence, the charter right now abolishes an elected position.
Sure.
Would you go so? We've already had that criteria, we've already went to public opinion, we've had our public hearing, and it's passed that test. What's the difference if we were ready to amend it, to put it back to an elected position? What's, we've already had the option to eliminate it. We're just giving the public an option, an initial option, to say, would you like us to abolish this in the charter, or leave it as a county treasurer? I don't see where that would violate the, the, you know, the essence of the law, which is to give a public a choice and not to eliminate it with a public referendum in here. We've already done that.
You certainly, you certainly have the option, had the option, let me put it that way in the past tense, of presenting the, the issue of Article Four completely separately, and as a separate local law. It didn't come to this meeting in that form. If you leave the language as, as it stands, as proposed now, as far as Article Four, you, you are proposing the, the abolishing of the elected office in proper form, as required by law. I don't think, I, I'm, I don't think you're gonna be able to make the local law an either-or kind of, kind of situation on the ballot. It could have been done, but I think that the time constraints of accomplishing that now, and I think that's what Supervisor Cottington was, was discussing, are, are beyond you.
Well, let's discuss, like remedy. If we're wrong, right, if we were wrong, and it goes to the voters, and somebody says, no, you can't abolish that position, that would, Article seventy-eight, it would go to, the court would strike it down, and it would go back to the default position, which is county treasurer, elected county treasurer. It's not like we send it out there and it's, and the voters pick one, and we get in trouble, and the whole charter is struck down. It would be, the court would strike down that position and say, no, you can't abolish that position, and you default to the county treasurer. There's no monetary damage to us, it's not like we go to jail if we're wrong.
Well, my, my reaction to that respectfully would be, and having sat on the board supervisors myself, I, you have to ask yourself the question, do you want to enter into a project such as this, already anticipating the uncertainty and potential litigation of that nature coming out of that? Because I, because I agree with you, it, it would not be clear.
I would not, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we prepare for litigation, I'm just suggesting I think the form is right, and I think it's the right thing to do, is to, is to offer the public a choice of whether they want it, and I think we have the ability to do it. That's it, I'll keep quiet.
Mark.
Okay, I'm gonna pull my sponsor, I clearly support Supervisor Stark. I'd also like to sponsor a resolution to recall the last amendment.
I'll second that.
Reconsider.
Reconsider, reconsider the last amendment.
The amendment of Michael.
I didn't, my, my, yes. Now that there's a second, I'll just, I'll explain why. My issue was, I wanted it to go to the public, and I wanted the public to vote on not only the charter, but the treasurer position as well. I completely commend the charter for all of their due diligence and their work on this, but now conceding to where we're at in this process, I'd like to revote.
Yeah, you have to hold on to reconsideration itself, and if it passes, then hold on the amendment again.
Right.
All right, roll call on reconsider.
Is that two thirds? Is that, need two thirds to reconsider?
No.
I paid attention.
Supervisor Wheeler?
Yes.
Supervisor Chair?
Aye.
Supervisor Allen?
Aye.
Supervisor Walters?
No.
Supervisor Streedy?
Sure.
Supervisor Cottington?
Aye.
Supervisor Quackenbush?
Does it to recall?
To reconsider.
Yes.
Supervisor R. Passkey?
No.
Supervisor Sweet?
No.
Supervisor Fair?
No.
Supervisor Stagliano?
Yes.
Supervisor Greco?
Yes.
Supervisor Stark?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on the former passed amendment, there are failed amendment.
Did it pass?
What's that?
The motion passed, yes.
Discussion.
Make it clear to the public what just happened. People in here probably have more clues.
When the losing side, they're the only one that can reverse it, and because I-
No, it's not true, the prevailing side-
The prevailing side, I'm sorry, because my, because the no was won and it was defeated, there was no way this couldn't go forward by balloting the treasurer option, so this is the only way to change it back. So, that's why-
But now, now what's on the table before us is the previous-
The same amendment.
Amendment which was to-
To eliminate the finance.
Eliminate the finance and-
Eliminate the finance commissioner. Replace all wording with finance commissioner with the county treasurer. Discussion.
Will we have a sponsor for that?
We have a-
No, it's, it's the same, the same sponsors, Jay, Stagliano.
Chair and Stagliano, right?
John, go ahead.
All right, right now I'm wishing that my son went to law school. Good, nice. I understand the frustration that people have with this word, I mean, just look at us tonight. I'm having difficulty with the fact that, okay, we commissioned a group of people to bring forth a document. That document has been brought forward. I say personally, send it to the voter, let them decide if that's what they want. This meddling, and, and believe me, that's what I mean by meddling, I mean meddling, in this document is just confusing the issue. I mean, just on the, the last discussion, we're gonna do the treasurer, we're gonna get rid of the treasurer, I mean, I don't think anybody has full understanding of what we're doing in here tonight. I really don't. One change of a word in one of these paragraphs can possibly give a completely opposite meaning of what was inten- intended, excuse me. As I said last week, we don't have the opportunity of, of debating this, we won't have the Federalist Papers to refer to this, as to what was discussed when this whole document was put together. What you're gonna have here, when we're done with it, is a mess. I'm sorry. Yeah, we're gonna have a tape of me saying this thing's gonna be a mess. So, once again, I, I vote no to all amendments. I, I just think that we are frustrating the process. We have a document, let's put that before the voters and let them decide if that's what they want or not. We had a commission, they did their due diligence, they presented that document, perhaps after talking to us, they had some second thoughts about some provisions in that document, neither here nor there. We've got the document, they presented it to us, they have confidence in that document. I've always said that I intended to allow the voters the opportunity to yea or nay, but the commission wants that was charged to bring us the document, we've got the document, let's move forward, give it to the voter, and we're done with it. I'm done, thank you.
Anybody else? Discussion? Larry?
I said I wasn't gonna speak on the resolution again, but I'll speak on it normally again. Keep in mind, you still have the option, if this would be approved by the voters, the county legislature becomes into existence, the first thing they could do when they come into office, they could schedule a public hearing of, of local law to have a finance commissioner if they wanted to, or a treasurer, either way. As, as, as the document was given to us, as John says, it says finance commissioner. That document, like I said, was approved, the county legislature could, one of the first actions they could do when they took office is to, like I said, have a public hearing of the law to make that county treasurer, because that, that document can be amended by the county legislature anytime during its life, but every time it's amended, it requires a public hearing and a referendum. Am I correct, Mike? Yeah, I'm pretty sure. So that's, if you want to keep that in mind either way you vote, that's, that's always, that, that option is always available to the county legislature if that was to come into existence.
What's that? Larry, Brian, there.
I kinda agree with John, I'm totally in favor, and I'm gonna hold to send this to the, to the public, but where do we stop with the amendments? If the commission would have come to us tonight with ten new ideas, would we have adopted all of those? I think they did a great job on presenting us with the document, I just feel that us meddling in it is wrong. I think we should send it to the voters the way that it is, and let them decide.
Bush?
John, I have to disagree with you, and I disagree with Brian. The reason that Mike brought it up, and the reason that I was gonna bring it up, was to uncomplicate the issue and to try to get this thing passed. That's number one. Number two, the commission even recommended this change. We didn't just start this and just try and do this thing, okay? It is because they recommended it, and they see that it gives the charter of more of a chance to pass. So, I'm not gonna say anymore, and that is the reason for this. Forget everything, and don't take this the hard way, because you lost your friends, okay? But Supervisor Stark's dissertation of this whole thing would have confused a lot of people, I don't think I would have voted for that either, okay? But to give the people a chance to vote on this thing without making it so confusing and complicated for them, I believe this is the right way to go, and upon the recommendation of the commission. So I will support that amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna throw my two cents in, I'm waiting till the last time each time. First of all, I'm gonna say it again, I do not believe, since we started this process and we were, it was said that we are the problem, that we should be touching a document. It's been clearly stated that we are the problem, we argue and fight. I do, at this point, this meeting's gone on longer than I wanted, but we are discussing an issue which needs to be discussed, and we're discussing it, discussing it over and over again, which is not an issue to me at all, but I do not believe, in my own personal opinion, that we should be the ones to modify a document. In saying that, it's been told to me that the only reason I'm doing that is because I'm the biggest opponent and I want it to fail. My problem with that comment is I believe the people in this county are smart enough to judge things on their own, they have the intelligence to read a document and figure it out, and it's their right to do that. By making this amendment, we take the option out. When this was discussed more than three weeks ago, when the issue came up, that someone at McDonald's said, it'll never pass without what the county treasurer eliminated, I said at that point, the commission should have given us two separate documents with a change in the one that would give that option. We do not have that in front of us. We've never had that in front of us, and we cannot sit here on the floor and make it up, and we know the time stream is out. So there is no option here. What we now have is a, is an amendment to modify the document again to completely change it, in all its parts. We're not giving the option to the voters. We're not giving the option to the voters. We are taking that option away. If we leave it as it is, as Larry says, let the legislative board come in and make that decision if they want that option. They can do it clearly, concisely, have the time to put it on the ballot prior to the term of the treasurer running out. Prior to that term, they could actually put that on the ballot, and they can make that decision. We at this time don't have the proper time to do that. We are not giving the option to the people doing this. We are eliminating something. We're eliminating something that came up after a discussion here in this room that said, it'll never pass the voters because they don't understand it without that in there, or with that in there. I don't believe that's true. I think the voters need to see the whole document, read the whole entire document the way it is and make their decision. If the legislative board, as Larry said, would want to make that change, and the voters want to do it at the time, there is the option to do that. That gives the voters the right, any option to say, do we want a finance commissioner, do we want an elected treasurer? We take the option out. Again, I brought this up three or four weeks ago. We need two documents. If we had two separate documents, with the finance commissioner separate and the treasurer separate, those could have been worked on as two options. I'd heard it on the radio, it needed to be two options. There was time. We're out of that time. I think we're going to confuse it, and I do not believe we should be changing this document. I think the people have the right to see it the way it is. Has nothing to do with my thinking, kind of construct something to fail. It has my opinion that the voters are smart enough to make a decision. I believe in the majority of the county, I believe that people have the right to majority vote, I believe we have a majority vote in this room as well, and I think that's where we should go. If the amendment passes with a majority, then that's what we do. I've got Dominic and then Bush.
Chair, earlier in the meeting, you read the resolution.
Yes, I did.
That created the commission and what their charge was. And their charge was to create a document that had a county executive and look at legislative districts. What this is now as amended is exactly that, exactly what we asked them to do originally, and it's up now to the public to determine whether they like it or they don't like it. But this is exactly what we asked the commission to do. We never asked the commission to look at doing away with an elected county treasurer. So all we've done is made a course correction, and this is the document that should go out and be debated, pros and cons, and let the public decide. And so with that, call the question.
Bush, you have his hand up.
I didn't see behind me. I'm sorry, Bush. I'll take that, Chair.
Okay, I have to, Dominic took the words out of my mouth when I got ahead, one thing. How can you sit there and say, with all due respect, Chair, okay, to leave it in and then let somebody take it out after the voters vote on it? If they voted on it, why would you change it later?
I believe it's their option, just like what we're doing. But I know what's going to happen. We are going to be accused of turning around so it'll fail, one way or another, and I also think it's fair to us, because we're trying to do our due diligence here. If you're all set, Bush, you got the...
Yes, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to call a caucus of the Republican Committee, please.
You have a vote, don't you?
No.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
No vote.
Yeah, we wouldn't vote, we're just going to discuss.
No vote, just call.
I mean, as you're a little looking food, can I come?
If you're big dogs.